I don't see anything here, I'm just thinking now.
Yep.
Where is it? Carol, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm looking at a board. I don't know where the camera is. Are y'all in the room yet?
Yes.
I call this regular board meeting to order on June 18th, 2024, at 7:05 at the end of the February 28th.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin Kirk, Williamson, call.
Trustee Brown?
Present.
Trustee Clark? Trustee Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Roll?
Here.
Trustee Taylor?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Right.
Um, so we'd like to make a motion for the approval of the regular board meeting minutes of June 4th, 2024. We have a motion.
So.
Trustee Williams and... Trustee Taylor. Any questions, corrections?
Yes. I have a correction on the part of the minutes where, I don't know, page, oh, page two. This is the Treasury Department, correction to be approved as regular motion true. Trustee Brown, okay, so here. I inquired if the admin stipend was for the deputy chief or deputy clerk, but that was through an email that was sent to us. So here it says that Treasury Heart clarified that admin stipend is for the deputy clerk. Yes to no, the whole stipend is for the deputy clerk. Treasury Heart said quite a few times that it's for the three ladies in front, and also for the deputy clerk. I don't want it to look as though the whole admin stipend is for the deputy clerk, correct? Treasury Heart, because it is not. So I'd like to amend that, that says that the admin stipend is for the deputy clerk as well as the admin staff.
Okay. Trustee Williams, will you make your motion?
Yes, I will.
Trustee Taylor, will you make your motion?
Yes.
Okay, any other, any other things to bring up?
I have one more. Okay, there's another section in the minutes that I'd like to amend. This is when Trustee Lynch inquired about the meeting, um, about the Homewood Casino. And within this paragraph, it seems as though Trustee Lynch said this entire paragraph, but actually, I was the one that stated that they have state-of-the-art security and weapon, you know, detention in place. Chief Petty Court is the one that said that if there's a situation that needs, needs assistance, the village will assist. Right now, it looks as though Trustee Lynch said this whole entire paragraph, but it was broken up into three of us speaking. Not, because Trustee Lynch asked about it, and so the two of us clarified.
Okay, Trustee Williams, will you make your motion?
So.
Trustee Taylor, will you make your motion?
Yes.
Okay, any other conditions, corrections? Secretary of State, ladies, call.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Roll?
Yes.
Trustee Lynch?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? Yes.
Secretary of State, Treasury Heart.
Thank you.
I got an estimate for eight hundred dollars to cut someone else's payroll. That's unacceptable. I'm willing to my will. He has the authority to create policy, to amend policy, just like he do for other things. You can look at this and you can amend the policy. And what can we do so that it is resolved for me, the taxpayer? Who has all of those berries falling all over her garden, her concrete? I'm trying to work in my yard and I can't because this is continuous. But I'm quite sure, surely you all come up with some solution that the homeowner would be satisfied and that I would be satisfied likewise. So I'm coming to your end, your guardian. My next concern is beautiful tension. Again, you know, there's been a sitting outside of Hickory Glen Park a few years ago and you've been listening to some of the things that could be done. A lot of it didn't go forward. But as suggestions from Rock, I always tell you, I want to look at Glenwood as a place to live, work, and play. And as I travel through this community, I see a lot of people love their town, Glenwood. I want to see our town beautiful. Some of you have been out here forty, fifty years. I've been out almost thirty years. And to see our community not looking its best, that's unacceptable. We have people who are volunteering, and if they can volunteer, whatever the village can do to help them, to assist, they should. As I drive through, I look at different properties that the village is responsible for. Make it so as to feel we can do better, we need to do better. And one last thing, I want to thank the village for the Veterans Day, Event Journal Day. I'd like to see the village do more because a lot of times people don't know about what's going on for the veterans. To drive down a hundred and third street and see all of those banners. I want to see a banner of Mr. Clark. I want to see a banner of all of us other veterans here. You to go over to the Blake Center and interview a lot of the veterans. I would tell my mom, "Oh, y'all got four people to interview for my class." And I've got there and start interviewing those three, four people. And I would prepare a lead for them and say, "Hey, I got a story. Oh, I have to do, we talk to this person too." So we have a wealth of information right here in Glenwood. And I would like to see a show that respects even more so people not showing our respect for all the veterans to thank. Mr. Brandon. Right here. Right here. I'm sorry. Yes, it's fine. It's okay. Just, just, I just want you, did you get my message? I called you. You sent me, you sent me an email about the weeds and all that. I'm writing a voicemail last night. Yes, I did. I've been having a tough Mrs. Brown, I'll definitely go over my messages. Now, thank you so much for your reply. You're welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Glenn Wood. Matt. And I am very concerned about Glenwood. I am one of those people that ain't here for all of forty something years. And to see how it looks now and see what it was to be the same to. I raised three children. And it was a village that, you know, so these shouldn't care about the children. Everybody, they had, my, we don't have our parents. We don't have those.
We built up, you still have a mother.
Okay, well, we don't know about. Like she said, um, a lot of things we don't know about because now that people are on YouTube now and seem like, um, something is wrong, but we can't be on YouTube. But I don't know why we can't be on YouTube. Um, also, I would like to ask the question, I would like to know, why the trustees don't come to the homeowners association meetings? You have been, I appreciate it. But how do you know what we want? How do you know what we think? How do you know how to vote for us when you came to our group first and asked us to vote for you? You, uh, said what you would do for us, but you're not doing it. If you look up there on the cottage road, you should be ashamed of yourself. The trustees, you should be ashamed of. I mean, the sign up there, uh, on Glenwood. Me, myself, a senior, and another senior, I donated a lot of pariahs myself. And we did holes with those pariahs out, remember? And I subscribe. All because we want to save Glenwood. Do you know your property bank will go down when somebody come here and see red signs? Hey, uh, red signs up there at Monerba, uh, saying, "Out of here." Don't you know your property bank will go down when they see a brown Glenwood sign? It's making me nervous to talk about it. Um, I'm a fellow man, I can't. But when you see that, that Glenwood sign. Just give it a time. Yeah. Here it is. This is another sign. Who got this Glenwood sign, you know? Yes, of his grace. I'm so glad my kids don't have to live here no more and I raise them. And Glenwood did a good job, you know, that addition. They all cooperate. Okay, that's how you look. This is how, excuse me, this is how you look. You must know that. And some of the trustees kind of ask for our votes. They ask for our votes. But we not seen it again. We've never saw it before. They ask for our votes and we not seen it since. So why, if you not represent the people, don't try nothing to me, you know, just try and be factual. If you not represent the people and what we are trying to do, who you working for? What community, you know what? I would look at some of the communities that, some, a lot of people don't live in our community because they don't live in our community. Because, and I want to live in our community that look like ours. Why I want to look at some of the communities that where they do live. Look at, look at, look at what they do there when they go on. Look at this. And that view. Look at that, get that view. Why can't we have, trustee, why can't we have this? Why can't we look at this? Why can't we have this? Businesses spend our money, we pay taxes. Why? Why can't we have this in our community? Why? Why can't we have this? Why? It used to be like that. Believe me or not, believe me, it used to be like that. But now it's not. I bring my foot off up there on Glenwood, on Dante, and up there at Monerba. And the places trying to bring Glenwood back, but I was moved. I love Glenwood. But we don't have people up there working for us. Thank you for this, you come to the meetings and at least act like you're here. Thank you. We appreciate it. We have talked, I have talked to the mayor, I, I know the mayor. Talked to him. You'll say you're gonna do something, you laugh in our face, I give you a laugh in my face. Because it don't get done. It don't get done. Those red signs across the street from your home. Right across the street. Who spray them signs? The stop sign on my block is falling down. Okay? I have a fair amount on my block because of the sidewalks. The sidewalks all around my park is coming up. What's with that? Why we can't get by, why can't we get sidewalks? I be on the sidewalk, we don't want our children near home. Why can't we get side sidewalks? I just want to know, these are questions. All of this is questions. Why?
Mayor, I have a question. Uh, I'm sorry about that. Um, let me first say, um, we recently hired a marketing specialist. And my hope for that for Glenwood leaders is to be exactly as you need to be in the village in this environment. Um, and I would hope that the board can get together, possibly later, to come up with a plan and how we want to really hire the building's marketing, curb appeal, so, right? Um, we gotta have that. Um, but now we're going, so hopefully we can consider that once. Because I mean, if it doesn't just stop at planning first, um, you see, you point out marketing, that's all we're capable of marketing. It's everything. And so we need, which is why we made the decision to hire, uh, spoke about the board, none of the planning first, we provide, that's the whole, we react to what we need. Hire, especially, uh, I think very difficult and something to do. Actually, we want to have a board, we want to bring somebody here to have a planning process, which we want is best happen. Uh, second, as far as the sidewalks, the last thing we discussed, that I probably worst record, uh, some concerners with uneven sidewalks, um, and there's a planning process to start addressing throughout the community. And so, uh, and Joe Robinson said more about that specifically, how we're gonna attack that. But we need to discuss, um, the uneven sidewalks in the community and the planning process and where it goes. Um, and then how can, you know, the movie's set up of, um, the, the H O A, the H O A meetings. Um, I guess for the trustees, I would imagine that, um, you know, if there's the many things of work that includes, you know, for me, I, I have work. And I, some things I try to make, others I can't. There's more than I can do. I certainly try to make it commercially, but I, I don't think that, uh, it's indicative of my desire, uh, to be eager or to support the residents. Um, because just as there's homeowners' meetings, this house just completely transparent, there's four of us personally. And this is also a platform, let's be clear, concerns. And reality of it is, a lot of folks that see the H O As, they're not too bored. And a lot of folks that come to the board, they're not too bored.
I mean, how do you know what we thinking? How do you?
I know. I do, I'm not sure if it's a good choice.
Not qualified, you okay, yes, sir.
Well, you're president, so you're absolutely right. It's fifty-fifty of both of mine. I stand for the community. But, but my point is that we're here twice a month, and this is the opportunity that I can talk. Now, first of all, and I'm not gonna take you there, it's not my whole intention. But this is also a platform to have. Well, one of the things I really want to ask is that you mentioned, you know, forty meters and, oh, uh, forty meters, and I, I want to be around it. For me, I think it would be, I, I'm certain, because I grew up on it and I knew way back then how communities work. So I'm, I don't doubt it. But you.
That's deserved.
That is. Which is one of the reasons we moved here. But my question to you is, you know, social media, uh, YouTube, and, 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 uh, all these other platforms where people are able to, for all the communities that exist. So for community participation as, as great as it was, I'm just asking as I wasn't a grand, how did that, how did that take effect? Was it just people came out of the water, they involved?
People here. People here, they came out, they were, they had something, um, this apartment, they had apartments down, but nobody. They had apartments, they had all kinds of stuff that you don't know. That you, uh, join in and different little classes and different things. It was just beautiful. The, it was like a village. And it, they here, everybody here. Everybody helped everybody raise their children. My husband coached, was a field coach. Different ones coached their children. Our children was on Cooper's and all the teens and stuff, it was just something beautiful. And I would just test. And a lot of times, the reason I talk about YouTube is because, you know, a lot of people older now, and I, I myself am too, and they can't get out to the meetings. But it would be nice if they didn't have to try to zoom, because I don't know how it works for me. And they can listen to what's going on in the community. Because they want to know, and they should be informed of what's happening around us. So it would be nice, and I don't know why, why can't they? You, trustees should insist that they, your people, see what's going on in the community. They should know that. They should know that all these trucks are passing the schools every day, and that children are getting asthma and C O P D. The trustees should be joining us, going out to the, to the legislature, to, to the governor and telling them, "We have too many trucks in our neighborhood. It's gonna affect our harvest. It's gonna give us cancer. It gonna affect our children. Care about yourself. Care about your generational wealth, when your property bank, okay? Your generational wealth, if you don't care for your children. Not because nothing's for a slum. You don't deserve a slum. You're not in that. We all got in that." So I'm not trying to be mean or anything.
I understand.
And I called public works and I, I'm like, "Cry." All I want was a few holes dug and put some pariahs out, you know, just, this village didn't even have to pay for it. And you know, I talked to a second year, Mr. Mudge, out there, I don't know who it was. And she said, "Well, they really busy, and we don't have three workers. And they won't be able to do it today sometime." Okay, well, they not gonna live so long, so I went to the next staff. So I called the next staff. And she said, "Well, Joe, um, not in, but I can tell you now, uh, they don't have enough workers." And I said, "Well, why don't they have enough workers?" And she said, "They won't. They won't have enough workers." What's going on, trustees? Why? It's not about workers to take care of our community.
It must have been just that day, the three guys.
She said it was only two.
Maybe just that day?
No. It must have just that day. I called at least four days, and after four days, the type of person I am, I went and met another senior, like, calls ourselves. We're gonna get it ourselves. People didn't pay good money in Glenwood.
Yeah, we get eight people.
People didn't pay good money in Glenwood. Trustees, step up to the plate, please. Thank you. Let me say something. I just, no, wait, let me, because I call you, sir.
Yes.
Um. I'm gonna just, of course, we're gonna speak for ourselves when we speak, because we can't speak for anybody else. I, I, you know, we watch and grow, um, we go to church together. So my worship and my servitude is for real. Um, I'm playing catch-up, not only as a resident, but as a little girl that was here during high school years and seeing what you're talking about. Um, playing catch-up, as always, when you're going to high school in the city, working outside of Glenwood downtown. Playing catch-up, but not being a part of my village for a good twenty-five years, not even voting, because I was never really here. I left that burden, whatever, to my parents. Now, I have children. And so, yes, do I see the transition? Yes, I do. I try my best to come to the H O As. There's one that I, I, I have ministry on Thursdays, Thursday evening. So unless, you know, Sabbath week, I can't make it to the manor, because I'm in, you know, on Thursdays.
Yes.
On first Wednesday and second Wednesday, um, I copy yours more than the other ones. But you come, but, yeah, but I'm gonna make, I'm, I'm gonna make an effort, the type of job, and I'm being transparent, just so everybody else knows. The type of job that I have leads me to customers' homes every day and every night. Sometimes I'll get off until midnight, ten-thirty at night, nine o'clock at night, I'll start at eight A M. And so, the times that you don't see me, I'm with someone else, I'm with another customer. My children don't hardly see me that often, unfortunately, but I'm a single parent. And so, I like coming to meetings. I like coming to H O As. It's not a burden, it's not a job, I don't get paid enough, I mean, we don't get paid that much. It's not a burden, it's not a job, it's not something that you're making me do, it's something that I want to do. I might take notes, now I might bring your concerns back to my fellow trustees, the village administrator, and the mayor, I like that. So when you don't see me, just know that I'm either working or I'm working. That's pretty much it. But one time, this last thing, one time I did drive past and it was eight o'clock, and although I saw your cars out, and I said, "That's out of order, I can't go." Took your H O A at eight o'clock and you're going to leave. But I appreciate your concern, I, I know you, I appreciate everything that you say. And prayerfully, each one of us, all of us, will, um, work toward making Glenwood the best that we can do. And I'm so glad that you are on the board, because you grew up in Glenwood. You know where it used to be, and you know what it can be. And I'm grateful to God for that. Thank you, Bill.
Yes. Mayor, I just wanted to update, I'll be giving you a report. Uh, one thing we've eliminated is signs, uh, the entry first signs, so we're at the second draft, we're completed those. What we're waiting on now is not only do we want to do signs, but we want to address the landscape around it. So just so you know, that has been very well received. Uh, we should have those probably the next two, three weeks before we find.
Good, thank you. Any other questions you have for?
Good evening. Judith Nims, 349 Strife Williams. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank Joe for the fantastic job that you and your crew did for us owning the estates. From my last presentation, they were there, I guess, like, six in the morning, seven in the morning, something like that. And, uh, we appreciate everything that you guys did. We certainly do, we've had many compliments to thank from the bottom of our, um, from the estates and from Glenwood as a village, because I know you went around other places other than just the estates. But you spent the entire day at the estates and even at the estate. And that's been a long time, I believe. Thank you so much for hearing us. On the, uh, communities, on the weeds and the growing of the grass and the this and that that's always talked about and we've talked about it. Uh, our high school, I don't know if this has been ever discussed, but our high school students and James Hart, um, need community service hours. And I think that would be a good way for them to get it, is to come and help the seniors out, help the people out who can't help themselves on their outdoor work, pulling up the weeds, mowing the lawns, planting, et cetera, et cetera. All they need to do is to be tapped. I'm former educator for many, many years, I'm retired now, but that's what I did all of my life. And young people will help, but they have to have direction, and they have to know to do this. So there is, there are programs in the high school and Home of Lots where I know, as well as James Hart, where the young people can be tapped to get community service credits and hours, which they are required to do. It's a requirement, it's not just there, they are required to do community service. And this would be a good way to, uh, enhance what we talk about, um, where people's lawns are not looking right, where there are weeds growing all out of hand, and et cetera, et cetera. Okay? My other concern this evening is, um, I'd like to know if Glenwood received the recent round of grants at the beginning of the year from, uh, Congressman Robin Kelly? That was distributed to many of the Southland villages. Did we get a round of grant funds?
We did.
Okay.
And we're in the house.
Okay. And I know it was in big amounts. And, um.
And we personally had another grant from the state.
Okay. We are concerned, uh, when I say we, Glenwood Estates especially, and I'm sure all residents of Glenwood, as to how that money is being distributed or used and spent. Uh, one of our concerns in the estate, and we've talked about it for a number of years, is we need street lighting. We have, we need a street light up, campaign and star in the evening. And we need to improve the lighting at each residences so that you can see, not only driving down the street, but walking, and just in the effect that it looks nice, it's uniform looking. So residences are concerned about the light up campaign and the funds that were promised or asked and looked into, that we've never had any real, uh, reception about to enhance public safety in the village. So that's one of our major concerns. And, uh, I didn't know if there was an application procedure that we needed to complete or fill out for a part in the grant funds? Are there still grant funds from those distributions available? And, uh, and what did they go for?
Yeah, they, you know, probably not only brings for a specific project, actually to help out these states too with, uh, with the, um, you know, you guys got some water issues there?
Right, the infrastructure?
Yeah.
And we know that was a separate budget too, because we know the president allowed infrastructure sun, funds that went to the governor. And the governor distributed them throughout the state to the mayors. And that was done, what, a couple of years ago?
Yeah, but they have to fund it on their end.
Okay. It's probably still in place.
Yeah, the money from Springfield Trains tomorrow, and we have center things in progress, but the Robin Kelly grant is specifically for infrastructure.
It was specifically for that, nothing but infrastructure?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we.
That wasn't my understanding, uh, you know, along with what you're saying, if you're the mayor, you should, uh, you know, but that wasn't what I was saying. It was to be distributed through the mayor and the budget, the mayor's budget, for the needs of the residences.
Yeah. Branded, I would probably give this specifically for, for a project.
Okay. All right. So are there, uh, funds to direct toward the street light up campaign?
We have, we have.
Is that being considered?
We consider that in the budget, um, which is coming this year, this year, we can discuss it moving forward.
Okay, because we are concerned about the lighting, the lighting on the properties and residences. Some people have lighting, they're not talking about the, not those lighting you get from home people and all that, talking about the poles and the street lighting. So that when you drive around, you know, you can see a little better. A lot of our residences, all of Glenwood, our seniors, and some of our seniors that are very filthy, and they're still dry, and a lot of them are still walking around. So, you know, we want everybody to be safe. We don't want anything to happen. But then, do it. We like to do it before. Thank you.
Brad from Glenwood, Wisconsin, in the estates. Um, it seemed like everybody said what they want to say, uh, but I did not want to go without saying it, since I had something to do with Joe, at least I thought I did. I had a lot of, I had a conscious concern to do what I asked them to do, and it was to take care of the business and take care of the S A P and not, they the S A P, you know. So I just wanted to thank you myself, Joe, as far as I was concerned, and, uh, it seemed that you were doing a great job, I just hope that, and trust that you will continue to do so. I know that many of us come up here and in a sense we probably the board and the trustees, but it's not, definitely not the intention to, so, but it's like anything else, when you go sit down for dinner, you want your dinner right, you know, and you just want trustees and the parents to be right with us. Uh, the one thing that Judith had spoken about, again, it's something I was gonna say, but I just wanted to add something else with a twist to it. And that was to say that the kids that we had, I didn't know about the, uh, school situations she spoke about, and I've been wondering, if they have summer programs for kids, where they get paid in the city. And I'm just curious to say, why can't we do the same thing, which would then imply that they could help keep the community beautiful, and start sweeping the streets and getting trash, or whatever, basically. Don't you all think that's a good idea? Just, you know, I was saying, if we can get the kids that have a summer program, I think in the city of Chicago, when they have summer programs, they pay the youth for working on a summer, we could do the same thing. And then not only that, you could have like the department works, uh, teaching them how to do certain things, how they come to, just like a on-the-job training, it goes on intern. Uh, I think that would be, as a pole, a lot of these kids get something that they get besides, and on the streets, you know, and selling the loans and things and that stuff. Not, you know, this sounds silly, but. Do you, do you really feel change in this life? Do you, do you really feel for changing this life?
Really, really, really?
Thank you. Okay.
That's something that we can consider, but yeah.
Have you, what?
Yeah, I have.
Well, no, no, I was expecting that, and I haven't prepared it till the kids yet, you know, so. And, well, I'll say, I'll say this, right? Don't you think this is the right answer? Boy, then, is there something to do at home? You know, I mean, I sat there sitting at home watching the video games and TikTok, you know? So let's, let's put that in motion, if you don't mind, uh, I would like to give a lot of people behind me, because we are there too, because they might have grandchildren at home that can make some additional money too. They'll help pay for the light. They'll afford food, they'll show them that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you once again to considering, uh, what I were close to last week to as far as the Estates with the, uh, getting this going around this year. I know it's in good hands, so I wish I could.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, so excuse me if I'm a little rocky, but I need to say what I need to say. I have a resident here at Glenwood. My name is, I'll come again. My name is Sherri Lovey and I'm a... Did you say your address? I'm like, I'm sorry.
What?
I have 41 Southland Drive. You've been living in this, um, community for a little, oh, close to six years. So first I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address my concerns and also give some credit to some of the partners that, um, I had personally witnessed, um, help with. And that is, first I'm gonna say thank you to our police department, because he's always been so quick to be smart. Um, whenever I haul or my neighbors have, I've seen that, so your efforts are not unnoticed. Additionally, I want to acknowledge the improvements made to the memory guard course. Enhancement has significantly increased its appeal and usability. I love the guard, hard to say, much better than the very last one. I'd also like to extend tremendous thanks to the public works department for your prompt action in cleaning up the damaged tree, which was run over, and the street signage, which was also run over on a block that's set since last week. As we were on, got to say on a block that reported just yesterday. And it quickly responded, so I want to thank you for that. Now we have some concerns that I would like to discuss. Um, is there a way that we can consider restricting access to memory drive during fireworks on a go-forward basis? Um, I know that it's unlegible for me to discuss and decide, but I'm just putting my thoughts out here. In previous years, the influx of traffic has caused significant safety concerns in and between tour residents. Implementing asset restrictions could greatly improve safety and enjoyment for everyone. Are there plans in place to address this and how can we support these efforts? Secondly, I have noticed an increasing problem with weeds and debris accumulating along our arterial and main streets. This not only affects the aesthetic appeal of our approach, but also risks concerns about the general upkeep and pride within our community. What specific steps are being taken to address this issue? Is there a schedule for regular maintenance that we can expect? Additionally, I'd like to bring attention to the Rock Island storefronts, which have been vacant for some time now. The broken patio and products and other debris that's cumulating daily. It's creating a constant eyesore that attracts from the charm of what used to be our village. How long will this be allowed to continue? What actions are being taken to ensure that property owners maintain their premises to an acceptable standard? Lastly, there's a significant need to repave State Street. This road is vital for our daily use and overall transportation within Glenwood. Is there a plan in place to repave State Street? And if so, when can we expect this project to commence? Thank you for your extension of these matters. I look forward to your responses and hope that we can work together to enhance all of Glenwood with safety, appearance, and infrastructure.
Thank you. Considering, uh, State Street as a county road, but we actually catch it because the county doesn't get out of here. I look, uh, put a request to, um, a couple commissioners to put that as a priority, because you guys are the rock that moves and not the blue shit. Thank you. Anybody else want to introduce?
Good evening.
Good evening.
In the Estates, I just wanted to accommodate on, uh, Mr. Murgat's, um, concern about, um, children working and having programs in place. For Glenwood for teenagers and also for, um, um, high school students. In 2006 and also in 2005, there was a program in place. The children would drop off right here in front of the, um, Glenwood, the town hall. And, um, they went out, they cleaned, they worked in the parks, they worked with the beautification as far as planting, um, flowers. They worked very well. It was decided one day that the director of public works, Patrick, decided one day that he sent him a babysit. That was his statement. He did not have a babysit for the kids anymore. It was a grant and the grant money was sent back. And, and I think it's a shame. If nothing else was done about that, but, uh, it's a good idea if you could look at it again. And I point somebody that has a, um, heart for working with children and working with these younger adults, he should, um, put something in place for them. Keep them off the streets. Keep them, keep them located. Keep them, uh, playing with your mind about working, letting them do what they want. So something was in place, and this guy one day, they don't want to do it anymore. Forget it. And we're not babysitting, that's what they considered. Babysitting, teaching these young kids about...
I want to say something to that. I, uh, I agree with all that, the programs and, you know, and everything that you guys have said. In addition to that, some of that almost goes to parenting as well. The, the, my, my kids don't want to be on the street. They're not allowed to be on the street. We weren't allowed to be on the street. Um, it, it's, it shouldn't even be like old school, it should be the rule. So I understand they're single parents, I understand that parents aren't sometimes at home and they're working, but that stuff starts at home. It really does. And I'm not making anything about the, the programs, absolutely. But when we keep saying it takes the kids off the street, my mother put me in piano, archery, swimming, volleyball, creative writing, gymnastics, piano. And so I'm just putting out an atmosphere that hopefully some of the parents will start to be, to do more parenting and have ideas about their children instead of allowing them to be in the street.
Well, I've got no parents, so I'm not even a yawn for it. It's not a single parent, that's important.
I am a single parent, that works.
But let me just say this right now, you know? It's not a whole contingency with mom and their children. Their children should be out in the house and you go live. So they don't have that, but if they have some kind of inventory chip outside of their parent, that can help them.
No, I'm not, I'm having that, I'm just, I would think.
They love to have parents, they could all, if they think that they talk about it. But I can't put a single parent on the street.
You don't want to watch it.
So we didn't have a lot of some people, they were, we were respecting our options. So I think, so when you say keep them off the streets, then I said that they, they, we're saying let's be better from the beginning to that point. That's how I look at it, that's all.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Anybody else want to introduce the board?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Jarvis Law, I'm at 512 Center Street. Um, I've listened to a lot of people often speak to, um, children having things to do, sorry, children having things to do in the neighborhoods, um, programs and processes. Um, and it doesn't seem to be a lot here, or it is, it's not being offered or not, we're just not aware of it. Some of you are aware of the, uh, board chair of CETA. Um, one of the things I just wanted to bring to your attention, uh, to begin with, is we do offer scholarships for any child going to, uh, university or higher education in the state of Illinois. Uh, for $2,500, uh, apply for it. Uh, I don't know if you ran out of money as of this date yet, but, uh, look for that every single year. We get the funds every single year. Uh, we are focused on suburban, which Cook County, and more specifically, south suburban Cook County. Uh, the other thing that, uh, you know, I kept hearing over and over again, I just wanted to come and speak on this briefly, was that, um, we're looking for kids with things to do. Um, again, I'm not sure at this moment if all the money's run out because they're already at, at the summer point. But each year we offer summer camp programs, after-school financial assistance programs. And you can do, uh, everything from tutoring to summer camp programs to, um, additional training programs. Uh, it's always a qualify for it. There is, again, unqualified typically, uh, but to give you an idea, just go to ceta.org.net and it's all listed. And you might be surprised what we do in the middle of this. Joe, the information is there, so you should see what you guys are...
Was it...
ceta.org or gnet.com. Google it. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Congratulations on becoming board chair. Anybody else want to introduce the board?
Okay.
Um, communications from the mayor's office. I wanted everybody to know that we're having our Juneteenth celebration tomorrow. Uh, it's gonna be from three to, uh, seven thirty. At three o'clock, we're gonna have at, uh, the Underground Railroad Memorial Park. Uh, we're gonna have a short presentation there in thirty minutes. And then we're gonna come back to the senior center and there'll be food trucks there, uh, music, all sorts of things. So hopefully, uh, everybody can make it out there. Um, our master's ceremony is Darius Johnson from Channel Two, I guess Channel Two. Uh, but we're gonna have all sorts of things out there. And I want to thank the committee, uh, Trustee Wall, Trustee Taylor, Trustee Lynch, and Trustee Brown for all their hard work that they have done. Uh, okay, the, okay, we have a discussion now on the Fourth of July activities. I know there was some thought that, that want to spend the amount of money that would cost them the fireworks due to the security we're gonna have to put in place. Uh, the fireworks, um, were, were only a third of the cost. So, uh, I'd like to have a discussion, you know, whether or not we want to make a decision. All right, because obviously we don't have another board meeting the Fourth of July. But if we decide not to do the fireworks, I think we still need to do something like a parade and maybe have some hot dogs and chips and stuff like that here at the little top. I think we need to celebrate that the Fourth of July. So the floor's open.
Okay, continue. The chair of the board first. I have a last motion that we cancel the portion of the fireworks, which would also exclude the additional cost of security, crowd control, or, or gates. Um, I'm in agreement with what's still happening with parade and a family fest following that, um, which of certain residents could benefit far more. And it would also put us in a position to start, uh, a new concept, uh, where we can turn a point which we've never done before. Uh, and I appreciate how many others want to move to our canceling fireworks as well for a little group. But I think that, uh, just even while we were meeting and talking with the police, because we didn't even have a conversation about that fireworks issue. But, um, there was a lot of safety concern, um, related to having this event. So I'd like this motion to be canceled, the fireworks, and repurpose the Fourth of July event uh, for something more inclusive for family, um, entertainment, uh, as opposed to the cost of security and fireworks.
I just had a call, I'm second in motion.
Trustee, Trustee Clark's second in motion.
I'm second in motion, because I think we're a good point. If we can see in this, this sign, uh, that is having, it's out of control. People are coming, it's not, it's a, it's a, it's a word on the freeway. It's a little scary, there's a lot of women, that's something like that.
Any other, any other trustee you want to say something?
I have a question, sir, so. Isn't there any other alternative? Because I know the fireworks was actually budgeted, right? That was budgeted and most caused, I think maybe we put a positive, we're paying the fireworks already?
We should.
So is there an alternative? I know that what the chief presented was like worst case scenario, right? That was with the gate, hour guards, there was...
That was, that was, it fell over the wood. What I consented was a security plan to address a range of scenarios when I describe the events or, or risks from minimal to what could be the maximum. Yes. But I would certainly recommend, if the event were to continue, not removing any of those, uh, mitigation factors such as the additional security fencing, those other, uh, maybe, other ideas and concepts we came up with for that. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to know, uh, Trustee Lynch, if you can describe what that alternative would look like when you say, uh, you know, family, like more family event or something. Are you saying to replace the fireworks? Are you saying to cancel the whole thing? And if we cancel it, would something else take place at the limit or what?
So, I, I thought I said that, but it wasn't clear. So, um, my recommendation would be just to cancel the fireworks and to continue with the parade. Uh, my thought is, and I was thinking before, maybe to come together and create, um, scheduling events or, or in what the intent would look like, I don't know. But that's a conversation for that particular community. But, um, my thought would be to eliminate the fireworks, which would subsequently eliminate the additional cost for security and all of that associated with that. Um, if I had to illustrate what could replace the fireworks, I mean, we could have, uh, something similar to, uh, Tell Me Parts of Rip Festival. There's something similar to a Taste of Glenwood, you know? There, I know, actually, I have a live band. Uh, there are a number of different things that would not maximize the attraction of a crowd that fireworks would, but still present some opportunity for community engagement and family activity.
So can I just jump in, just? So, and maybe Trustee Brown, this is...
Maybe Trustee Brown, this is time for a question. Is that when Trustee Lynch says eliminate the fireworks, Trustee Lynch, are you saying eliminate the fireworks and everything that leads up to the fireworks? Because the difference is, we're, we're looking at it as...
Eliminate the fireworks and still do the parade and we act follow the parade. It's when we can, just like we do a village where we have hot dogs, we can just expand that with maybe the live band or, uh, several food trucks, some of them get on, but... with maybe the live band or several food trucks, something probably on there, but eliminating the fireworks also eliminates that added sixty thousand dollar cost of security and additional personnel and perimeter security, things like that. So, I'm only saying eliminate the fireworks, subsequently eliminate the additional security package that we had, but the parade and the gathering following that can still happen.
Right, and I think, and Trustee Brown, tell me if this is your question, I think the question is, when you say eliminate the fireworks, I think what we have to hear is that you're saying eliminate that entire venue over there for that entire day and then to upscale from the parade over to here, that would be correct?
I mean, that's an interesting decision, where we have the Village Hall, or if we have the food trucks, whatever, if we have that, of course, you know, that's, I don't think that's, that's out of, out of bounds here. The more, the larger uncertainty is, for me, eliminate the fireworks, which subsequently eliminates that added security of sixty thousand dollars, that's something I'm concerned, but we will hear, of course, I don't care about that, but eliminate that eliminates that crowd and the community.
Okay, I can understand that, but Trustee Lynch, let me, let me just finish, and it's not apples and oranges, and clearly, you got both chiefs here. I think what we're looking at is, if you create that venue, so you eliminate the fireworks, yeah, sure enough, that may take some people away, but for people that you don't communicate to, that the fireworks are canceled, now you take the rest of people that have been coming here for years to see the fireworks, and now they find out that the fireworks are not gonna happen that, that night, so we would have to effectively communicate to the people that there are no fireworks, even though we may have food trucks and different things at the golf course. That's why I'm bringing up the point that we have to be clear when we communicate that if we're canceling the fireworks, are we canceling the entire event?
We should have.
What's happened, what's happened.
You should have had the Village Hall.
Okay, so, but Trustee Lynch, correct me if I'm wrong, you were saying that we could still have some different things, remove the fireworks out and still possibly use the venue of the golf course, correct?
You did hear of the golf course.
Right, and, and the point I'm just trying to make, clearly, you got both, you know, the two chiefs on the safety issue, and you got Joe with the fireworks issue. The issue that has become with a lot of these communities is that, with these, and I don't wanna label them in any kind of way, the people that come to create havoc are just looking for a venue, a large venue where people are gathered. So, if we still have something over there, and we downscale it, we'll be found from last year, and the chief, I know you and Deputy Chief Wilfey has found out that what brought all the people was that people started sending things out about that venue that was not true. Case in point, people said that it was a carnival and they were gonna be riots, and we all know that there was no carnival, but when that went out on social media, that was the draw, and a lot of young individuals told us, what we were told was a carnival.
Well, I think too, what's important to get that heard is marketing. I'm always talking about communicating, getting the word out. We have a marketing specialist now who I'm certain can get that information out, whether we decide to do the extended entertainment option or not, or we just keep it at the parade and hot dogs, but we have a person that can properly communicate that on several platforms so that the information is properly out there about what we're hosting, what we're not doing. I mean, we're gonna have to communicate or market the event regardless if fireworks happen or not, in this, we should be marketing and communicating the event, so, if we do it either, fine, the golf course, I don't have a preference, and I'm not pushing one decision or the other, all I'm saying is, I think that it's safe and feasible to continue with the parade and add some type of community event following the parade, not to the same s, and I, I could be wrong, I don't believe it would draw the same crowd that fireworks do, but it certainly won't cost nearly as much as fireworks and added security would.
Right, I think it's broken up, you know, we go back in time a little bit, we set the whole event where it all occurs in daylight hours, okay? So, we start the parade at twelve o'clock, and we march over to the Village Hall like we used to, and also, if we invite all of the homeowners associations to participate like we used to, each homeowners association had their own venue, we made sure that if this homeowners association was selling hot dogs, hamburg, the other had to serve rice or something else, if this one had to help, uh, stuff ups and sodas, they, they took care of it, so we would divide it up into five separate, from five separate times, okay? And each homeowners association, they would bring it on, this way, they could accumulate, they could get some funds for activities they wanna have for the rest of the year, okay? We end the whole thing between three-thirty and four o'clock, okay? We started off at twelve, okay? Most of the, of the, uh, actors that would like to interrupt, they'd rather do anything at night anyway, okay? And most of them don't even get up till five or six o'clock in the morning. So, I mean, all of the families, we can get out there, we can have us a good time, we can enjoy each other's company, we start off at twelve o'clock, we're at four, four-thirty, we're cleaning up, okay, everybody's back at home and doing whatever they wanna do, but you got a chance to fellowship with your community and your neighbors all at the same time, and it's much cheaper. And like I said, I mean, you've got one of the perfect guys, you've got Lena Field, he used to put it together for us every year, okay, and he obviously is a fantastic job, and the man is sitting right here, you know, why not you, he's here, you know, he can design it for us, line it up how we do it, and between him and Ray and Ray, I'm telling you, they have a fantastic job, and then they also had, each one of the homeowners associations, okay, they had to come up with something like a straw man or something like this, you know, scarecrow, and they used it as a competition, and then we would vote on who came up with the best scarecrow, whether it was the homeowners association, or the Taste of Glenwood, or was it the forest, or, you know, whichever part, okay? But it was a lot of fun, we had a little competition, we got a chance to meet over by day because we don't see every day, and it's over with at three-thirty or four o'clock, kids are back home asleep, the teammates are coming out to their bread, and mom's dad is sitting on the back porch and enjoying a little peace.
There you go.
What year was that?
That wasn't wrong, I said it was, that wasn't wrong, tell us what years it was.
Two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we had two youth directors, myself and Kathy and Ted, that we laid out the parade, we had the youth group out to the parade, and also we made the main, as for a countdown, the youth were joining us in Glenwood, oh, they bought them and they got a scarecrow to visit, so we had a supply of family situations, even with the children, after they were raised. We came down to the village hall, what we did, we had tents, and each organization, not just the homeowners organization, turkeys, uh, clothes, whatever, and we had Glenwood and tents, it was predetermined what you would serve, so we didn't have a particular and the budgets that were made, our tickets at one particular location, used the tickets at the, uh.
At all vendors.
At the vendors' places, so everything was under control, all the money was accounted for, even if one had, had a clear wagon out there, but nevertheless, it was good, it was family, we had, um, they knew, we had the strategy coming, they brought in some advanced, we had traveling, we did a puppet show, we had a whole lot of activities, it was a good day, clean, fun, and wholesome, and you got home early.
Yeah, and the fire department was the best, was they hit that phone, and it feels like they were in the vault.
I can, I can appreciate you are living this thing twenty years, almost twenty years ago, and I'm not, fourteen years ago, and I'm not saying that wasn't good, I mean, right now, we're looking at less than a month to relive what you are here with the scarecrow? Okay.
Two weeks.
You got, you got two weeks. The, the parade is gonna go about, I mean, the parade is always gonna be the parade. It gets dark at, when you say dark, it gets dark at about eight-thirty. Are we talking about the Fourth of July having, what, what about the, I mean, what, what about the younger adults? I mean, we, we have to look at not just, just this age group that's here, not just some little kids, we have to look at, I mean, my children are twenty-one and twenty-two, I don't think that they will want to, to do that when they're twenty-two, twenty-eight years old, and I'm not saying that we should have it or not, and we always keep lumping this sixty thousand dollars, the whole thing is sixty thousand dollars, with the fireworks that was a part of it, it was proposed for the police to do security, we have not done that yet, I mean, each part makes up a certain amount, and it does make a difference if we cancel fireworks, which I don't have a problem with canceling fireworks, it makes a difference if for the Fourth of July, we all convene at the Village Hall versus Glenwood, that's a huge, we can't say it doesn't make a difference, because it does make a difference, that's a huge venue down there as opposed to parking in the street, we'll see what it looks like tomorrow, because we're having Juneteenth tomorrow, which is a much smaller scale, so if people start complaining about parking, and we have to walk, and we have to this, that, imagine what that would look like on the Fourth of July. So, my take is, I, I'm in agreement with a ban, uh, family things, some things happening, however, what chief said that it almost doesn't matter if we take a firework element away, because he still recommends that type of security would be in place. Fortunately or unfortunately, right now, we're living in fear, and we don't wanna live in fear, thinking that something's gonna happen, or something bad's gonna happen. At the same time, I understand too, that we have to have a contingency plan, just in case this repeat of last year, so we're back here, we're just still back in the middle saying, should we cancel the fireworks? I don't know why we're talking about the parade, because the parade is gonna go on anyway. What are we gonna do when we get back to the Village Hall? Are we gonna go to Glenwood? We need to decide what we're gonna do with that, and if we do go to Glenwood, do we have time to get a ban? Do we have time to get all these vendors? Do we have time to do it? And that really is the meat of it. What are we going to do if it's there or if it's here?
That's why I selected that we use our own residence instead of vendors. Why go to outside vendors, we make our own residence, our own groups, our own houses and social.
I can tell you, hang on, let me tell you this, the forest, where I live in the forest is the most unrepresented as far as HOA is concerned. Krista and I are going to do the best we can to try to revitalize it and all that, but it's not fair to put the forest up against, or next to these states, or, or next to Brookwood Point.
It's not that type of competition, we're just saying.
It shouldn't be, but all right here is, let's do the HOAs, and then the forest will be there like, oh, I hate the forest. Can I make a comment? Um, you guys have just been talking constantly, but what does the community want?
We ask them.
Okay, ask the community, what do you guys want? Do you want the fireworks show or lunch? I brought it up at the HOA meeting, and they said, no, they don't want the fireworks, it's too dangerous, it's too much going on, it's a lot of money, if you all can budget sixty grand for thirty minutes, what about our children? Why don't we do some type of program for the summer? How would you do this? Let me see about that.
Okay, so, is there any other comments? Okay, this is a, a motion to, uh, cancel the fireworks and have a parade and a little family fest, uh, which we'll put together a program. We have a first and a second.
Yes.
Have your third queen to call roll. Trustee Brown?
I'm still not clear, um, I don't, this is, I'm one person, and I have my vote like everybody else does. I am going to, I'm going to, I'm going to abstain, because although I believe that we should cancel the fireworks, I believe that, period. However, I do not see us doing something, I believe, on a grand scale at the Village Hall. I think it's gonna be too crowded, I think it's not gonna be enjoyable for everybody that wants to do the Fourth of July, and I think it's gonna be very disappointing if we only do something of parade and little hot dogs on July the fourth. So, let me be clear again, I believe we should cancel the fireworks, I do not believe that we should have something very small at the Village Hall, I think it should be bigger than that, without fireworks and without the cost of sixty thousand dollars. I abstain.
So, this is, that's abstaining.
Trustee Clark?
I voted yes on fireworks.
So, you're voting yes to cancel the fireworks, right?
Yes.
Trustee Lynch? Trustee Will? Trustee Taylor?
I'm voting to cancel fireworks.
However, I have some clarification as far as the dollar amount we're discussing, it was my understanding that the entire event would be sixty thousand dollars, not sixty thousand dollars for fireworks, that was only a portion of it, and security costs as well, and whatever we do, there will always be a cost for us to be safe, which means that our fire department and our police department must be there, and that also call for overtime, everybody is not scheduled to work on those holidays, so there will always be an additional cost on the holiday for us to be safe. So, I vote no for the fireworks, but I also write further discussion on how this is going to take place.
Trustee Williams?
I voted in favor of the motion.
Okay, motion passes. Number two, approval for a nation to global estate homeowners association for their annual picnic, last year we gave them twenty-five hundred dollars. So, if somebody wants to make a motion, uh, and Nellie, do you wanna come up and just say a few words about the picnic?
Good evening, everyone.
It's always a nice time.
My name is Nellie Briggs, and I live in three-three for Arizona. Um, for the past, um, eight years, since we had my year, uh, doing the Estates Cookout, uh, as an American attest to, we always have a great time. Uh, you have to excuse me because I am passionate about my community, I am passionate about children, and so, that, that's where my heart is. Uh, and because of that, uh, we're trying to put as much as we can into this event. We don't have a large park like Hickory Glen, we always minded Hickory Glen because it's a large park, but we have the Estates Park, and we're coming up on our seventh year anniversary of our new park, and, uh, so normally, uh, what we have, we have horses with a budget already, uh, we have horses, we have the petting zoo, uh, we have game charts with live entertainment, uh, we have DJs, we're gonna have spoken word, uh, and so, we're gonna have a great time. We always give the food away, we don't have vendors selling food, we give the food, food is free, we don't want the community to come have to pay for this and that, it is designed to uplift and build. It is designed to uplift and build the community. And everybody economically is not in a position to pay for food for this and that and the other thing. So we always have more than enough food. Well, the food that we do have leftover, we give to a group home that is India Estates. So we have a c- a cilla in our community, and so after the event is over, we give that food, we donate it to the cilla. Uh, and so we've been great, the fire department really supports, the children love the boom machine. Yeah, I got my, oh, the, the, uh, last year, they let them go in, like, go into the fire truck and, oh, that was a blast. Gee, that was a blast, that's, yeah. So, um, and we love the, the police department, they don't support the way they used to. Um, the police department used to always hang around, be there with the children and stuff. They come by, we do appreciate, um, they hang around, they bring some badges and stuff, they bring fingerprint kits, and that's nice. What we have not seen under trustee, um, I don't know if you all don't know what we do, you probably don't. I, I never met any of you. Um, I invited, uh, Larry, uh, to come and trust our homes association, he never responded. I've never seen you, I've never seen you. Uh, I've never seen you, yeah. Uh, Felicia came last year, you were actually a member. No, I'm sorry, I told them, uh, please, HOA, yeah, you did support. Paul Stouts would always support. Um, so we, and we are always supported, and he's been giving us donations, and we appreciate that. We just want to take it to another level, that was why Murda answered the five thousand. We, uh, give out, last year we gave out two hundred bags, and, uh, to the children. Uh, we give away toys, we're giving away things to the seniors. Um, you know, gave out food baskets, I took, uh, personally, we give turkeys and stuff to seniors who get on food and things of that sort. A lot of, a lot of things we do, the community really don't know, which is doing, because we're a family in the Estates. And I hope that as we move forward, we can be one Glenwood, and we can be a total family. It should always be separate, you know, uh, we want to make sure that we're coming together, everybody is welcome to come to the cookout. Um, and so we always have a great time. So that was for the five thousand before, you know you've been with us, and you always have a great time, and yeah. So the community always has a great time, and we have AARP coming, Jim Care, uh, we have something for the seniors. Um, you know, so, um, Representative Will Davis, uh, uh, Cook, uh, President Tony Breckler, everybody always, uh, supports. Uh, and so we appreciate that, and so thank you, and so that's just a short synopsis of what we're gonna be doing. I am the president of HOA of one of the Estates. Our Sergeant Arms is here, that's Murda, Robert Murda. And then our, um, Judith, uh, is our, our certification committee, and that's Mark. She always comes and speaks, uh, so nicely for us and represents us. And then we have our community navigators, who come at times and they speak, uh, to you, to the board, and so, um, we're, we're very organized, and we, we appreciate seeing you all, we would love for you all to come sometime. We, we never see you all, you never come to our meetings, um, or anything like that, so we would love to see other than Felicia. Uh, and so we would love to see you all. Uh, and we thank you for your support, whatever you can do, whether in regard to our community, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time. I have a question.
I just got a question for you, okay?
Oh, thank you. I have a question.
What response do you raise, okay? The last, the last time I was there, okay, the last time I was there, the newspapers took a picture of us, and I got that newspaper, so.
Well, the newspapers love us, uh, we always get support from the newspapers, and South suburban news, uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, we, we get a lot of support, we're small, we're small. I mean, we have a hundred and thirty-five members, um, but we do get a lot of outside support. What was the question, honey? What was the question? It's, it's Saturday, August seventeenth, and I have lots of flyers. And if you go to our website, um, the Global Estates Homeowners Association, if you go to our website, it's posted there. Uh, but at the next week, I'll make sure Murda, he brought some last time, but I'll make sure that he brings enough flyers so that you can come. And also invite some of your neighbors out as well. Okay, and when is the hours? Twelve to three. Mm-hmm, and, uh, we have burgers, um, uh, hot dogs, chips, pastas, spaghetti, you know, chicken, soda. You know, we have, you know, all kinds of, yeah, we have, we have food. So we want you all to come, we don't charge a dime, we don't charge a dime for the food. No, we're not, not charging for the food. And it's very controlled, we, we do the food, we know some of the food, we don't have different people like a pop-up type thing, we don't do that. Every year, we know exactly who does, we have our cooks, it's all clean and clear and, yeah, so. Just a perfect integrity of what we're serving the public.
Thank you, Nellie.
Thank you.
Uh, so, somebody wants to make a motion to donate, uh, make the motion, and the dollar amount we want to give.
How big a motion do you give for that?
It's the first time on table, uh, Global Estates Homeowners Association for their picnic, up to five hundred dollars, and we have a second. Trustee Roll, any additional questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
On statement, actually, I agree with Mr. Fields that, um, this is a nine-dimensional budget, put into our budget in the future. And whatever amount we allocate to one HOA should be the same amount as allocated off.
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree. Okay.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Lynch.
Yes.
Trustee Roll.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
I abstain.
And trustee Williams.
Aye.
Okay, attorney's report, turn down it, motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a report.
Lieutenant Minister, Brian Mitchell.
Uh, thank you very much for the questions, uh, I want to say, assess a fee, ask us to check on your neighbors. Uh, as you know, we, we have cooling centers, we have cooling center, a burning center, and the village hall cooling, uh, other than that, I think we're supposed to continue.
Thank you. Uh, engineer Dave Shiller.
Thank you, mayor. Couple of years ago, the state of Illinois sold a bunch of bonds, called the rebuild Illinois bonds. Some of those proceeds are, the plans were made that had a stake share of NFT, uh, money, and then it was distributed to the municipalities. So by June of next year, we need to have spent, uh, five hundred ninety-one thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty cents on roadway projects that have a useful life of more than thirteen years, which is the life of bonds. So the documents that you have before you are to spend, uh, that amount on the resurfacing of one hundred ninety-second street and the concrete patching of Illinois Avenue. And there is also an engineering agreement for Robinson Engineering to perform the work. It all through a high lot, it all to the end of construction this year. And there is also a, uh, NFT resolution to pay the engineering fees out of your local share of the state's mortgage tax, so that the entire rebuild of Illinois money can be put towards construction.
Somebody would like to make a motion for approval of village rebuild Illinois bond funds. Uh, in amount of five hundred ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand and forty cents to resurface one hundred ninety-second street and catch Illinois Avenue. So trustee Williams, do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Clark, any questions for Dave?
Uh, Dave, so when is this project slated to start?
Uh, we both, we've already picked up the, uh, quantities, we'll put together some of those I got, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We're looking to get, um, under construction by the beginning of September, uh, and as we know, we're trying to pay within October and November, which we're fighting a lot of the council.
So this five hundred ninety-one thousand, not including the engineering fee?
Correct.
And what's the engineering fee?
Eighty-five thousand, that's for both design and the construction management.
And the recommendations for that to be paid?
Yes. Uh, the, your NFT ones, the.
Oh, your NFT ones.
As long as.
So then should we not add that in your fee to the five ninety-one? Because I mean, that's your, your services, the part of that cost, correct?
Correct, that's why there's two resolutions. One, to spend the five ninety-one for construction, and another to spend the eighty-five for engineering.
But I only have one action, one actual item, you're an engineer.
First of all.
I said we only have, so what?
We only have one actual item, that's for the five ninety-one, which is two resolutions for your fee, but that's not a part of the proposal. And that fee is included in the five ninety-one.
So trustee Williams, do you have any motion?
Yes, sir.
To include maximum eighty-five thousand dollars in engineering fees? Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Clark, do you have your motion, yes? Okay. Um, any other questions?
Somebody would like to change the eight thousand. So then that means we would be approving.
What the dollar amount?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna vote, we should vote on exactly, is that six seventy-six oh ninety-two? Understood?
Yes.
Six seventy-six what?
Uh, six seventy-seven, six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four cents.
Okay. Will you amend your motion? I'll read the motion again, and then we'll hear first and a second. Approval of village rebuild Illinois bond funds, uh, eighty-five thousand, I'm sorry, five hundred ninety-one thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty cents to resurface one hundred ninety-second street and patch Illinois Avenue with an additional eight five thousand dollars in engineering fees for a total, uh, dispersed amount of six hundred seventy-six thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty cents. Do I have a motion?
So.
Trustee Williams.
Second.
Trustee Lynch, any questions?
Just one thing I need, are, are we gonna give notification on the residents in town, so that we know when those streets will be, when actions start?
For sure, we always make the contractor, you know, post the signs and door hangers and whatever else.
I mean, for, for, for.
Can I ask a quick question? What, what did you say, it's like, how's your?
It's from bonds sold by the state of Illinois, uh, probably around twenty-twenty.
Any other questions?
I can, I can answer that further, so State of Illinois, uh, for three years, I lived with this year, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, had six tranches of money that they gave up in, uh, villages, um, two tranches each year. You have to specifically file a DLR, uh, report with the State of Illinois, uh, what they expect to do in order to be used this money. So that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish, to provide that money. And the eight five thousand will be local funds out of the NFT, the online, which we call, uh, the DLR.
Any other questions? Let me clear for you, it's a call.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Roll.
Yes.
Trustee Lynch.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
All right, any other state?
That's all for me, thank you.
Okay.
Um, I'll start with Mayor, can I say, where would be the park?
Uh, I'm setting up pre-construction meeting, getting ready to start the construction of the football.
Okay.
And any week now, if you have the, uh, time, they're assigned by the contractor, I don't know if you're using board.
Okay, fire, Keith Walsh.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, and more, uh, we're gonna hear back, and I apologize for the length of that report, but I want to get your information and code. Uh, if you will, uh, December thirteenth, now, I said, uh, showed the need for replacement of a twenty-five-year-old bumper truck. Uh, I was instructed to go ahead and move forward, and have you familiar with the committee? Couple of those fellows in the fire department, our committee, are here tonight, uh, if they, if you have any questions for them, but it took about six months to complete this, uh, building of the specification, a lot of research, analysis, created the T documents, put them out, they're gotten back in here, and, uh, and before we go on the night, they're gonna get a lot of corporate, uh, comparisons of all the specs that came in. I do want to thank the committee, uh, who's called out there in that panel for this board meeting tonight, for all their service to get this up and ready for us. Uh, the request before you this evening is contained on page three, that is your authorized authorization for approval of Mayor, sign the documents, place the order for the fire bumper with Rosenbauer, and on that, we see eight hundred eighty-two thousand, four, I'm sorry, that's, eight, eight hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars, if the, uh, motor that I'm explaining to you is available. Otherwise, it'll be the finance amounts that's on the sheet at nine, nine thirty, nine thirty-two, four thirty-nine. I'll explain that later. Uh, we did receive four bids for this bumper, uh, Spartan, H and E Pierce, and Rosenbauer. Thorough examination of that showed that Rosenbauer had the least exceptions to the specification. And after examining the twenty-two exceptions, talking with the, the dealer who's here this evening, if there are any questions with him, uh, we had determined that all of those, uh, non-compliant issues had been addressed within the spec. Uh, we just called them out in different fashion at different locations. So, uh, this particular company is fully compliant. As I said, we're replacing a twenty-five-year-old leased apparatus that struck with one in nineteen ninety-nine. The maximum NFP certification allowed will create is twenty-five years, which puts us outside of that scope right now. Uh, the last time we purchased a fire vision of this age shows about four hundred thirty-four thousand. The unfortunate part is, we have two fire stations, one on the other side of the tracks. We have ISO, which is insurance service of, uh, Office of Illinois, which is our commemorative for fire protection services. And I noted in my original, uh, the thirteenth, that we are currently a class-three fire department, which goes to ten, the best being on the war, which is the state of Chicago. Part of the requirement there is a certain amount of gallons per minute pumping capacity that we must maintain in a rolling stock. And by having the three pumpers, we can maintain that, but more importantly, uh, the NFP A states that you should start the replacement process after fifteen years. And any firefighter that is reaching the age of twenty-five years is no longer certifiable. Uh, one suggestion that came out of the group was, should we look at re-adoption of the current bumper we have? We did that, and I was as pleasantly shocked with those numbers as I was with the actual purchase price numbers. And to be able to take what we have now, would put us over seven hundred thousand dollars into this whole piece of equipment, and we can only get five years of credible service out of NFP A, if we get that. So it created a lot of difficulty. Uh, one thing I've always asked, and I'm just trying to figure out how we pay for these things, and, and, and one thing that's certainly be suggested back to me, well, this should go to the finance committee, this should go to this committee, that committee. Uh, several years ago, there was a couple, you had a board that you remember, we always had said that a larger purchase like this would have to entertain a financial, industrial finance package in order to move us forward, because we never followed a capital improvement program, capital improvement program over the years. We tried it several times, and the former sheriff of finance did attest to that, and we never, we never were able to finance it, or, I'm sorry, to fund it. So squad cars, industrial cars, trucks, and public works are recurring budget items. When I say recurring budget items, uh, the thought is to finance them over a period of time. And the industry standard, because of the lengthy boom times, because of what happened to this industry during COVID, which I didn't quite understand until we started down this educational piece. which I didn't quite understand until we started down this educational piece, uh, they created this niche lending market, and you'll see attached to this packet is the recommendation of a funder, uh, as a loan, which is called, the recommendation would be, uh, tax exempt leasing court. The, the nuance to that is, they come up with this product, and the other thing I've al, I was always told, or told prior was, let's look at local funding. So I did look at local funding, I went to the Fifth Third Bank, you have that in your packet, I went to the CND Bank, you have that in your packet, and I went to the Chase Bank, and the Chase Bank declined because they don't have a product that fits this niche market. So what the, the finance package is, is a five-point-seven-nine, uh, APR for, uh, a package which if we order this down as, uh, after this meeting, and finish the purchase contract, all the nuances of the, the final design phase, maximizing that number, or number not to exceed, the finance company makes a full payment to the manufacturer, which gives us the opportunity to take advantage of a sixty-four thousand dollar prepayment on the apparatus. So the, the, the bid, the bid specification at nine hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars reduces by sixty-four thousand dollars because of the prepayment option we would be exercising for a financed amount of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand four thirty-nine. Now, the next piece of this, which is very important, is that we're in, which I came to find out through this process, we're in the end-of-life, uh, on a motor that they use in the fire system, the separate instrument now, which is called the Cummins L nine.
And.
And nine.
L nine X twelve.
And this is a tried and true motor that's been in fire bumper trucks for years now, uh, very reliable, we have them, they're almost flawless. If we're lucky enough to be able to secure one of these motors, at this point, we're at fifty-fifty margin because of the way that orders come in, uh, then if we're able to secure that motor, we can take another fifty thousand dollars off the nine thirty-two, which would put aside a total purchase price of eight hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine. Myself, or the manufacturer, the dealer rep can't guarantee that right now, so the request would be for the total, uh, not to exceed nine hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred thirty-nine, with the option, I'm sorry, exercising the option of the five years of payment. The first payment does not start until one year after the fire truck arrives here. The build period for the fire truck is about five hundred days, so that's a year and a half. So the first payment, as came here at the iron of, of nine thirty-two, the first payment will be due in twenty-twenty-seven, budget year, for two hundred twenty thousand ninety-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. I did have an opportunity to speak with New Brian, who are why, and we went over these, and we tried to, or even tried, we looked at the three that we had, the advantage to the tax exempt leasing court is that all of their, uh, their financing, the percentage, and money is all put into those five payments, whereas the CND and the, uh, Fifth Third, we have to make, uh, interest payments, through the course, just like you would with a bond, uh, payment. So the, the optimum, uh, for the village of Illinois at this time would be to go with the full financing of the tax exempt leasing court, which is a municipal finance, uh, iron, which comes out of Thompson Station, Tennessee, and they pretty much do exclusively fire municipal equipment, uh, lease purchasing, and I know one question was lease. It's not lease, it's a purchase, it's a terminology in the bank where it requires after that fire period. So the last payment, then the title comes to us. Uh, I, I believe I talked enough, I used to talk too much, uh, if there's anything I missed. Uh, I give, I was asked, the refurb cost I gave you was just sixty-seven hundred thousand dollars. If, if we, I believe I, I, I stopped in the mid-thought, but, uh, we currently have a three-engine bumper rotation, and the rotation is such that we have a pumper station one, pumper station two, and this oldest piece of equipment becomes our squad truck, or squad pumper, in a rotation. So this being twenty-five years old, it would be scrapped out at, when we have the new one, and then we would put the oldest one in the rotation in this spot, and we, we, we go down all the extra tools that we use out of expressway, it's like that, but the reason we have to maintain the three is, any time going on the road and crash the, one of the two main bumpers, we have no backup, and this is our cost-effective way to keep a backup in mind. If we only had one station with no railroad track, we could do two bumpers, and we could make anyone in town, in three minutes, guaranteed. We can't do that with the railroad, and if anybody's been nominated, railroads are more active than ever. So I think that means everything that I had on my notes, and if you have any questions, Mr. R.
Any questions?
Look, what coverage? Do we have, what is yours, do we have insurance coverage on it, or any maintenance coverage on this?
Uh, I don't understand the question.
Is there a warranty?
Yes, yes.
The warranty is what's on here?
No. Two-year bumper bummer, and then five-year paint, five-year on the Allison.
On the transmission, and a roller.
And all the suspension, yeah, so.
So two years and five years, warranty? And the shop for your dealership is in where?
So our main, uh, dealership is in St. Louis, but we also have a satellite shop in Moquita, and plus our mobile techs come right to the firehouse and work on the vehicle, so.
Any other questions?
Yes.
What about the chassis?
It's our chassis, it's Rosa's.
Okay, I guess my question was, when we work with other communities, are we able to use them all? And our, we, we have already eight rooms, pardon, that we had two of them, so we're gonna have to have three actually. If, if we, if we're, if the one we have now, which is on a lean and a prayer, so to speak, if that were to go down, we would enhance our automatic energy balance policy, but we, we still have to maintain our own based on that ISO rating.
My other question was, is, is there favorable funds available for fire, for everybody?
We did, there are, and we did go to trustee Lynch.
Lexicole.
Lexicole, which we, the village, uh, board had hired them to do grant work, and the first grant was on fire. So the first grant we put in for Lexicole was for a fire gear, the ensemble underwear, which is about a little over five thousand dollars a person now, and we're out, we're outdated on that as well with the annual. And Lexicole set up a four-year, a five-year plan, but right now, there's one grant fund from the State Fire Marshal, which was funded at five million dollars last year, I believe it was, and was distributed out. We put in for that one and didn't get any, it was only fractional pieces, and there's nothing out there right now that I can apply.
And will we continue to apply?
Absolutely, and, and Lexicole has it on our list, our next year's grant application will be for the new, uh, self-contained breathing apparatus, we have on our, we wear on our backs, that's already scheduled out with our Lexicole representative.
So, as far as, if you are to approve to work this truck, is there any cost to us writing, or what fiscal year? Is it made payments, how does it work?
We, the process would be that approval is given, we meet back with the factory representative relatively quick, but we'll try to secure that order of fifty thousand dollars, uh, reduction, but more importantly, my personal opinion, and maybe the industry areas more are harder too, that's a tried and true order, the, the, the focus would be to try and get that accomplished, but as far as any expenditure, uh, we don't have an expenditure until one year after the arrival of the apparatus here being run, so that the maximum payment of a, a year for five years would be two hundred twenty thousand oh ninety-four fifty-seven. We don't have exact numbers, but if we reduce the principal by fifty thousand dollars, which would be eight hundred eighty-two four thirty-nine, I can check that that, that expenditure will round to about two-ten, to, uh, two hundred eleven thousand annual for five years.
So how long would it take to receive delivery?
How long?
How long would it take to receive delivery of the unit?
Four, uh, under five hundred days, and that's probably just about right, right now in the industry. Some, uh, the one company was, uh, uh, four years, and we're, we're, we just, we don't have that luxury.
There you go. Four years.
Four. Four years to get a fire truck delivered, which is to me outrageous. The other thing I looked into, back years ago, when I was involved in the fire truck industry with a partner, we had a lot of demonstrators, and these dealers were using for two, three, four, five months, and they saw we reduced. Since COVID hit, and the supply chain fell apart, they're not doing the demonstrators anymore, and there's no stock of those out there, because as the committee had told me, they had some a lot of ideas that they wanted to get, and I said, no, no, I deal with a lot of things, and if we would have been able to find a demonstrator, it could have been delivered sooner, or at, or a cheaper price, I don't even know what to do, but it's just not fair.
Chief, I got a question for you.
Yes.
So, uh, to follow up on trustee Williams' question, uh, first payment is one year after the delivery?
Correct.
Is no deposit or security?
No. And, and maybe go to describe, that's an industry, become an industry standard, I believe.
Well, the prepayment would be come from tax exempt.
Right.
And that would be, you have about thirty-eight years.
Okay.
Okay.
The terms of.
And, and you're gonna have, uh, you're going to have a performance on it too, so you're covered.
Okay. Uh, the terms of loan, that's, uh, years, uh, but the life of the asset can be anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five years? Have we tried, have you tried to extend that to seven to ten years?
We can get numbers on that.
We'll, we'll do anything for that. Okay. Uh, which will then lower your, uh, annual?
Lower the annual.
Let's try to lower it.
The only caution there is, and I have to look at the replacement schedule, because our next oldest one is a, uh, uh, oh, is a twenty-two thousand and four, this is a ninety-eight, so I'm at a frame here where we have to keep an eye on them. We can look at that, that's an hour.
That's the next question.
And, and.
The next, next one.
Yeah, and these, and these would, the, the numbers there are max, we've got to cut it off from there.
And then my final question for you is, it's a different brand, different, uh, provider, like, is that a, a typical, uh, one thing, bottom of the desk, manufacturer?
We, we have got, um, we have all, uh, we have three H and E, which is Anderson Motor Works of the, the past, and we have the oldest one, because this one is replacing, the chassis was from H and E, or Henderson, Henderson Motor Works, but, uh, we have H and E, but the H and E that became in, which I would have been completely comfortable with, and had good serviceability minutes, but they didn't even come close to beating the disc drive.
So, so my question is, would you change the manufacturer, what meant, like, service costs? Like, would there be additional higher service costs?
No, because the, any of the H and E don't have a shop, I'm here working local shop.
Okay. Same thing with this car, all part of it?
This, this bumper, we go to their, their shop for a two-year bumper warranty, and then five-year on main, five-year on drive.
So there's no specialty needs for the van?
No.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. I have two questions. So if this quote is valid for fourteen days, if we miss the fourteen days, my first question is, what happens to the quote? Does it go up? Does it go down? My second question, you can answer it together, my second question here also, it says, uh, they've attached the application, which must be completed in order to proceed with the credit process, but here, we need copies of the village's last two years of audit financials, along with a copy of this current interim financial statement. Are we able, trust, treasure her, and Adam, are we able to provide that?
We are able to provide twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and we will marry it twenty-twenty. Oh, for the year of twenty-twenty-two? We don't have a final law.
So then if we don't, thank you, if we don't have a copy of the current interim financials, we don't have the current, right? Okay, then, then, we, how, how we, how can we even?
Your question was to ask of an institution, and the response was, get the approval, move it forward, and they'll consider the, just what, uh, Adam said, for that piece of this and come at us, and then we'll move ahead until we, uh, push forward with the merger. If it doesn't get financed, then the whole thing vanishes. But they'll hold it beyond the fourteen days, I think is what.
Well, so. So to answer the first question, my original submission for the bid process, you were at five forty-eight-nine, so I redid it for meeting, and it went down to five seven-nine, so you can only hope it keeps going down, if we do it again for seven years, whatever, so.
Yeah, but I think it should be in, I mean, if there, whatever that, that means, I understand, that has to be in writing. I can, in a hard way, I can't go based by if someone says we, you, you get this part of it, and then we'll talk about it later, we probably can't. The, I mean.
But the way, the way this proposal, the way I stated the motion, if you will, not to exceed, that's what we have committed to, is not to exceed, uh, uh, nine, nine thirty-two.
Nine thirty-two four.
And now you're seeing the five point seven-nine, and, and then allow your staff to roll me down from there, that's the concept for it. I think once finance works with the tax exempt, that locks in place, so the fourteen days is just there for them, but I think once you start working with them, that locks in place.
Okay, this is my last question, I, I'm just trying to wrap this around my brain on a second. The budget right now has not been done, or is not finished. We're trying to take this short of a million dollars, and our first payment won't be due until next year or two years, am I right?
Well, for the three minutes, we do the twenty-seven budget year.
Okay, twenty-seven budget year, so in essence, what we're doing, and please tell me if I'm wrong, we are putting this out for whatever board in two years to figure out how to budget this, while we're still working on the parent budget.
Yes, but we're protecting the citizens of the village by making this fire truck that will put on fires. So you're right, you're absolutely right, but the, the, the timeline marches on regardless.
Okay.
She forgot a few questions.
Yeah.
I, I think I heard somebody ask, but I wasn't sure. Was that the chassis being built on?
It's, it's our chassis, it's Rosenbauer, we don't have the chassis.
All right, and then, Adam, have you had a chance to look at this on this?
No, it's the first time I've had it.
Uh, Chief, right, has the finance committee looked at this yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, um. I'm sorry. So Chief said that there is a, if we do refurbishment, there's only a five-year, would it only be a five-year warranty on that?
It's not a warranty, it's just a five, an absolute five-year certification from the FPA max.
So I'm, when I looked at the packet, it looks like the body warranty is for five years, paint warranty is five years, and the lettering warranty is for three years.
And then there's a complete bumper bumper for two years. But we're essentially offering same kind of service agreeable as a, as a.
For five. Okay, and those warranties don't start until.
And so, the, uh, and, and I, I guess the trustee also went, if you don't have the audit committee that haven't started on the budget, because I'm. because I'm I'm really concerned, and I was saying this for open comment, but I I certainly agree, if we we have, we have to replace that, but it's it's what we do always, is that we don't have a plan in place long-term for this, and I think that if this is approved immediately, we'll be repeating the cycle and not have a plan in place so that when the board comes along two or three years from now, they're going to be tasked with trying to figure out how to pay for this. But I'm looking at the account balance report that we got in our packet, and this as of May seventeenth. So Adam, Brian, does anybody know, we don't have June's balances? Because I mean, as saying, it's just a hundred and thirty-five dollars in the corporate account. Uh one thirty-five, over seven, and that's the last of the team. We need to get ready for children, and we're trying to make a financial decision, and we don't even have the most recent account balances. Trustee, that's what I'm looking at, I'm pretty sure we may not want, we may not have that in the package, so it was a sign. So I just, I, chief. So uh where are we with our session? Are we just about done with that, are we?
Yeah, they, it's imposed now, the roofers will be here on Monday, walls are gonna be up today, floor to floor is on Monday, AC start on Friday, starting this kitchen now.
So do you know where we are today, because I know we budgeted coastal one point four million, but do you know where we are because we haven't done our mission?
I I do not, uh treasure heart, I know we're working on that, and it's got greatly, uh but but remember, that is tipped tipped out, not tipped out, funded out. Uh so this would be two, you know, two separate pieces of.
And with the the fire problem, if we I mean, when's the last time it's been serviced?
The one can be replaced.
Yeah.
Uh we, it's it's every uh, it's twice a year we do the full service on them. Uh but service itself isn't going to prolong life, it's it's reached the end of the serviceable life of twenty-five years, and it's not certifiable anymore, uh and I've got issues with the body, the back end of the body that are falling off. Uh is it working? And and I think more concerning to me is the timeline of when we start to get a place over in that line of manufacturer, because you're still, even how they say, uh you're still uh, when days up? Five hundred days up, you know, from even order, whenever we order, so pushing the pushing the can down the road is only going to expose the secret rate, and I think we're we're out of here, and I wanted, I don't know what else to tell you.
I I I disagree with the chief, I think that certainly it it is necessary to replace it, I mean, um considering the variable tracks that puts us in a particular position. But just me personally, I'm I'm at a really tough point because considering we have, uh we don't know where we are with the fire station, um we don't know how we're gonna pay for this. Our financing hasn't looked at it, finance committee hasn't looked at it, and we're gonna leave this burden for the next board to try to figure out. And the recommendation to pay for this is out of general funds. And I just don't know if, I'm I'm not even saying I don't know, that's not a safe decision. I think for this board to make without a long complaint, or to understand, we haven't even gotten the budget yet. We we haven't had audit yet. I I I'm open to considering some alternative routes, but obviously, we're looking at approving a little over a million dollars. And we currently have a project that is over a million dollars, and we don't know who's staying financially with that. That's all I have. I have another question.
Trustee, I'm sorry, trusty, hold back a minute.
This is something like a company, right, but what do we do when this goes out, right? How do we provide fire assistance to our residents, right? How do we do that? Some of these expenses that we're talking about, it's kind of complicated to plan, but right, when it comes to day, there is a lot of cost. So what do we do, what is the solution? Because yes, there are areas that are spending, we don't have the budget, but what do we do to make sure that we have it properly quickly? Part of the work is that we provide police, fire, and motor works, what do we do? That's what money is for, before we get into fireworks and all of the things that we spend money on, right? So then what do we do if the truck goes out? Then what is the alternative? Because when you say five hundred days, that's not two years, right? Because things happen, people promise you this, and then it's not that, then you pay for it. So now we're saying two years before we even get the truck. So what if the truck breaks down in the next year? What do we do, I mean, we didn't order, and now we're scrambling because it went out now, and now we're scrambling to place the order, what do we do? Because we still have some answers to the residents, they're not happy with it, right? As taxpayers, when I get out of my one-one, whether it's fire or environmental, I need you to come in, I need your equipment to work. So then what do you do? So I think we're just taking this move with the company, but there's a lot of problems in what you were saying, and I and I start this, and there isn't orders that if you have any pumping trucks for that today, that's a one. Two, um it's still going to take, and even if the truck went down wrong, it's gonna take an enormous amount of time for us to begin truck. Three, chief, alluding to the fact that we have three trucks, which would just be down to two. And we have the community response, I forgive the acronym, but if that is important, if that happens, that's why we have the neighbor contracts with other first responders, police, fire, to support this in the instance that those happen. I absolutely agree, that's taxpayers likely, that's what it's for, but it's also supposed to be allocated and budgeted appropriately. If we we are asked, we need us to pass for, and you know, chief did provide back in December, we're asked for uh 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 a sales spreadsheet of items and public works and and the golf course and police, things that require, that's up for maintenance or repair, so that it can be properly budgeted. But because we are consistently year after year after year after year after year behind our own budget and audit and prep process, it's difficult to part on the plan in these sense. Chief, you may look, alluding to the fact that the commission board was going to be financing to make we try to do large capital proof, and it's very difficult because we're constantly pulling from the general fund, the exact same fund that we're hoping to end this in two or three years. So if that doesn't speak values, the fact that the fiscal responsibility or oversight is questionable, because the reality of it is, is that if we can't even afford to find the extra capital improvement line, right, and that one is constantly being pulled from the general fund, but yet this is supposed to come from the general fund. How much is going to be, you just said the general fund is the operating fund for the village, and my add goes better than what. So I understand over and 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 I certainly think we need to replace it. I'm just not comfortable approving it without a plan, um our finance, Adam hasn't had a recommendation, uh Brian hasn't given us a recommendation, uh Cooper hasn't given us a recommendation, finance committee hasn't. I I think as the board, our board, I think we should look at the whole list of vision and not just the pump. Do we need it? Absolutely. Right, I'd love to go forward, absolutely, but if you're only to forward three years from now, I don't think it's fair for you to be by those and try to figure out where the money's gonna come from without raising taxes.
Any other questions?
Trustee, just to let you know, the bank balance is around six-fourteen, when I look at the top, the five-seventeen date is a title, that date should be changed at the top, so I'll reset it.
Any other questions?
I think, I think we're in a situation that not unlike other families, that they're bad when they do it, and uh so that's, that's what makes a decision we are. And this is something we can't like kick the can down the road, because if our plumber does it a lot, and we can't sort of, sort of have our union. We still, we need a long time, you know, we just can't even phone out like that. It's still gonna take longer for us to receive something after we made a decision, answer nothing.
Any other questions? Okay.
Mayor, can can we, is it appropriate to have uh to a motion to table at least until the finance I mean, department can look at, can can you, you know, Adam and and treasure, Sweden and whoever else that's over there to just look at it? And I'm not saying to kick it down the curb, I mean, if you could put it on the agenda even for the next agenda, just so that this is the first time that they're seeing it, it's only fair that they're able to at least dissect it a little bit more so that we can just perform with it.
So you're making a motion to table?
I'm making a motion to table.
Until the next meeting?
Yes, until the next board date.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I I just want to be clear, because I appreciate, you know, we are a board, I respect everybody's differences, and everybody has its own sort of obligations, but when this comes back, I just want to know, what are we expecting, what are we looking for? I consider it, just the recommendations from our finance department, finance committee, um I mean, can we, chief, can we also give the options, as Adam said, to see the contract, and look for longer terms, uh see if that price will change, but if we're gonna bring it back, it's bringing it back with something we can look at, like the art.
And and it should also be on, the fourteen day is out of the contract, but the pricing is going to hold to July third. So if if you bring it back next meeting, I spoke, my bigger worry is losing this motor, but uh that's that's my, that's my advice, just believe is the fact of losing that motor, and uh you know, we we may revisit the finance use of it and not do it, but it's the order.
Trustee, my my, our recommendation to your cabinet there, and here you are, sorry. My recommendation to your cabinet there is, you have to find a funding source, not just property taxes, but and commit, more or less commit to that funding source. Uh just to follow, I know the chief has G E M T funds that are new, just started coming in this January, I haven't, I heard thirty-five thousand, thirty-two thousand, I haven't verified that, but maybe like take ten percent of that, fifty percent of that, and I'll get the chief, you know, I can stipulate with the chief and say, hey, what works for you? Commit that money to the capital projects fund to go to this, and then we have two, three years to build up that that cash balance, and then we could use that for for this new plumber, uh future plumbers as well.
I'm 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 open. Two suggestions or ideas, but also know, like I said, chief mentioning who's he is, uh he's had plans to uh for that that G E M T funds, now they're getting towards something else for the fire station, right? So.
Right, and I just.
But this is my, you know, that's my, that's what I'm saying, it is, that's why we.
But once we come to you, you know.
Yeah.
More or less approve and order this, strip those funds, so then instead of everyone saying, hey, we're gonna grab it, that, grab it, that, no, we have a plan in place, these funds are dedicated to fire equipment for for determining.
Yeah, if you do, if you do a percentage of that G E M T, that that's fine, we didn't allocate a hundred percent to run waste of oil, but an allocation of a percentage would certainly be awful, and that, the projection on that was about two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand a year.
And I I'm I'm completely fine with that, I I support our public safety, but we just have to do business differently, and we can't just always lean towards it's police or it's fire, it's public works, absolutely, have a plan pretty forward and long-term, and as we are, hopefully, if I have a question, I'm a slow or a forte as though, that we are thinking through other vehicles, our purchases this year, so that we can start to allocate for this, so that we're not just presenting with this and and setting up such a huge decision in such a very short time.
Yeah, and I'll work with Joe with the budget, um we can work out like a, for that to make sense, like a grading scale, like a hundred point grading scale, and do it for all equipment, and then that that can be used for your recommendations for replacement of equipment. But more important, I think, we have to find dedicated funding sources, so I'll 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 talk to the new the bride and the new bride to to figure out what those sources could be, and then we'll give it to you as like a menu option, and you guys can pick and choose and say, hey, I like this one, I like that one, you know. Obviously, the easy one is property taxes, but you don't want to immediately go there, you have to look at other funding sources.
Okay, there's a motion to table on this board, have a big first wave to go.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye.
Trustee Wall.
Yes.
Trustee Lynch.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Uh anything else from the fire?
No.
Uh public works, go.
Thank you, mayor, I got two items, item one is approval for emergency funding for repair of the village hall police department A C system, more specifically the chiller, at a cost of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven hours.
Six thousand what?
Seven hundred and fifty-seven hours.
And who, what's the company that?
Merz.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the easier area of the village hall, police department, uh emergency area, and that's twenty-six thousand, seven fifty-seven, uh with Merz as the contractor. We'll move, trustee Williams, second.
Second.
Trustee Lynch, any questions?
I have one, uh Joe. Joe, yes, Joe. Um I don't know what to call him, I'm sorry. Um so I know, some months back, I can't remember specifically, we had come to the board for approval, and we discussed, uh because your your reason was, this is someone who we use before. Um but we asked specifically that when there's approval, that we go out to the, that we get several nominations for a, for treatment in the parts.
Uh but yeah, I don't I don't remember what you said, but I don't see that either, Peter. Why why don't we just, why don't we go there, get several other uh pricing for this for titters?
Well, uh we have this emergency, as the emergency funding.
So we go out, we get a pricing because of the emergency?
Correct.
If you can divide that six days, you're.
Any other questions? Have you, third wave to go.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Wall.
Yes.
Trustee Lynch.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Uh so just just let me, you say this, Joe, even if we don't go out, do we contact any other companies?
No.
So if we, can we at least explore alternatives before we just use one company, because you could probably announce somebody who would have cost ten thousand, five thousand dollars cheaper at the same time. That's all I ask, even if it's emergency, we can't even be, let's try to find, at least consider what some of the alternatives are before we just go with this. before we just go with this community.
Absolutely, I know.
Okay, what's the...
Second item is approval for emergency funding for the drive installation to our Comar pump station, at a cost of fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight hours.
Fifteen thousand, two...
Two-five, eight, one-five, two-five, eight.
What's the name of the company?
Metropolitan Industries.
Right, so you would make a motion to the approval of a drive pump installation at Comar pump station on an emergency basis in the amount of fifteen thousand, two fifty-eight with Metropolitan Industries. So move, Trusty Lynch, for a second.
Aye.
Trusty Roll, any questions?
I have one, uh, so I know you need to mention to me to note that the other, um, the other, uh, drop pump could be filled with seventy-two?
Yes.
So, did they, did they examine it, or did they just say that?
They didn't examine, they said this is way better than what I expect and see that they recommend they replace that and replace the one that's down. Essentially, it's going for the pump number one.
So what's the plan for the second?
They're gonna both be replaced.
They're both gonna be replaced at the same time? Okay, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I'm just asking, it's just for, just one? Is it for two?
It's for both, yes.
Any additional questions? Can you interpret what you call it?
Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Trusty Lynch?
Yes.
Trusty Roll?
Yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Trusty Williams?
Uh, any new business? Any old business?
I have, um, new business. Um, Brian, where are we, so, where are we with the audit and what?
So I have, probably, best to have Adam give an update on the, uh, audit where he is now as far as the verdict goes. To kind of have it be required to this board meeting tonight, to kind of identify where we are with that in terms of putting together the sheets on the department heads, and I know Adam's meeting tomorrow. Uh, he and Brian are on the conversation as well, uh, Treasure Heart, if then, uh, getting ready to work with yourself to kind of pool some of the stuff away from Adam, so that she can concentrate on that, with myself and the department. So the sheets haven't gone out, announced the department heads for emerging part class issue? Correct. What have you been doing?
I will this week, I'm gonna meet with Brian tomorrow, and, uh, he's already started the process. What's that? Oh, I meant Brian, Brian, alive. Uh, we plan to meet tomorrow, and he's already started the process, what I did last year. I'm just gonna go through it, make sure it's good, and then we'll release those to the organization.
Thank you for that. But Brian, I wonder, what is the meaning of, why, why I haven't explored sheets already, guys? The next, the next weeks, we're working on, we're working on. What's, is there a, what are you doing, any specific thing, what's, what's the holdup?
I think part of it goes, we just hire a person to work on something, which is Brian, which is just like I'm saying, he's already started working through that. Treasure Heart, they're coming in, uh, hours ago, working on something, organizing some stuff, you know, or keeping up the information. So it's a combination of several people pulling together to try to get this stuff done.
Well, but that's all informations, but I'm asking, why haven't, why hasn't the discretion been sent to the department heads to do their forecast? Would, would that have been the deal to be, or Adam?
No, it, it has, it has, it has been beautifully, I, my time for the last two months have been a little bit, um, we discussed this before, um, last year we discussed it, I delayed my start because, um, the league's baseball itself, um, my weekends right now are very limited, coming in on nights on weekends. The last month and a half, probably, my hours have been significantly down, maybe three to five hours over two weeks.
So, Brian, because Adam has had other obligations, whatever they're gonna be. Can we judge nothing else to give?
We will, I think, with hiring, with hiring, we'll, we will start to see stuff. So I, we, we talked today, we have a plan in place, there's gonna be communication to the board monthly about what the finance is doing. So we're gonna have like recent account statements, one month ago, three months ago, six months ago, twelve months ago, um, weaknesses and concern issues, to-do list, all that's gonna be communicated with you. We, we started talking with Miller and Brian, and three of us got into the same room. Uh, that, that was the hottest topic that we had, was communication to the board.
I, I, I believe, I appreciate hearing that again, but I, I mean, we have you, we have our Treasure, we have Miller Cooper, we got our Hunky Lynch right here. And now, so my, so we hired someone, so we hired an operations man. When somebody leave out their finance firm, it's been about two weeks now. So he hired you for the last board meeting?
I wanna say he started right, right about that board meeting, that Monday.
And what is this individual responsible for?
Combination of legs and firm, department.
He's not the finance director. So we hired him.
So, so let me say this, Trusty Lynch. So we look at the priorities that we have as it relates to finances, not, I don't know, I'm not with the budget. I'm sorry, I don't know what the priorities are, because we, we may, we could set a meeting and discuss that. But it's not that the budget is not a priority, but we have other things that were higher priorities as well. When you look at the hours that Miller and Cooper is coming in, and we talk about this cost between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars a month, we're trying to get as much as we can out of that as well. With Adam's on at the time, and with Treasure Heart coming in, I mean, I'm not gonna make excuses. The stuff is gonna be done. Is it gonna get done as quickly as we want to? No, when we look at now having someone that is gonna be here forty hours a week, there's something dedicated to get these things done, we'll start seeing a bigger difference in terms of providing the reports that you need, and also getting things to the department.
So help me understand, I mean, who do you want to share? We're paying to, we're paying eighteen thousand a month to Miller Cooper, we're paying Adam. And now we hired additional, and we, we could get reports of things that we needed there. And so we added, we hired someone else. And so how much do you think our business is gonna be?
Well, I can get you that.
Cause I, I don't know, I don't know, I, I, I just don't know, and so...
Yeah, it was within the range of the board set, I can tell you that.
Okay, so then, yeah. So then Adam and Miller Cooper are training this person, they're gonna do a transition, there is a transition plan?
So there is a transition plan, however, this person is very knowledgeable in finance.
So this person now is gonna get us everything that we had before couldn't get us consistently?
Well, I'm not saying with the combination of everybody working, we're gonna hold together to buy what we're needing.
So when we, so you understand what this person's possibility will be, what this transition plan will be? And so how long do we play to keep the contractors?
Well, I think as we start going, you know, with this person together, we can then make the combination when that person is fully prepared to start minimizing those hours.
So you have an idea?
Right now, man, I can't tell, because right now, it's got to be, all it's got to be done, Miller and Cooper, like I said, we just had a meeting right before this. You know, we look at the things that need to be done, and how they're gonna get done, or we're saying, okay, let's just do it, and we just dump it on somebody's desk. I think we should be able to see now, when we just dump stuff on everybody's desk, what happens? And we need to have, like we're saying, a plan, a transition plan, but at the same time, we need to be realistic when we look at the things that we got going in finance. Right now, you know, we still have the twenty-two hours to work on. We still have the budget to work on. We still might have other things to have, go with the day-to-day operations in the finance department.
And any other new business? Any old business? Somebody like me, I don't know what you're doing there.
One more.
Trusty Roll?
Aye.
Trusty Clark?
Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty Clark? Trusty Roll? Trusty Taylor? Trusty Williams?